January the 26th, 2021, please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please all be aware that tonight's meeting of the Board of Supervisors is being audio recorded. Carol, could you make a note in the public record that we had an executive session tonight on a legal matter? We have one, one issue of business here is the receipt of the minutes for January 24th, 2021. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Now I'd like to get to the Gwinnett Mercy University in St. Charles Seminary. Brief introduction and presentation, and I think we have Deanne, the president of the university here with us. I think Bishop Senior, yep, I see you there, and your legal representative, Christian Pianze, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may, President DiMilio will have some comments and then the bishop, and then I have a short presentation to share with you, some visuals, but we'll start with them if that's all right?
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, President DiMilio, please.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. Great to see you all, even if through the computer and on this Zoom call. Good to be with you this evening, and I want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here with you and to share some of this introductory information about a very exciting collaboration with St. Charles Baromea Seminary. And as you know, the university had the good fortune to purchase 154 acres in December 2018, directly adjacent to our main campus. Once we did acquire the East Campus, we're very proud to say that we are the largest landowner in Lower Gwinnett Township. So as we continued to work on the development of the East Campus, I was contacted by Bishop Senior last December 2019, and that is when he indicated that St. Charles had sold their property in Lower Marion and that they were looking for another Catholic university with whom to collaborate, and also a place where they could relocate their seminary and their campus. So we saw this opportunity, you know, as a great potential collaboration because Gwinnett Mercy University, as you know, has a rich heritage in this region, and of course, St. Charles Baromea Seminary has a very long and rich heritage in the greater Philadelphia region as well. Also important to note that the strategic plan for Gwinnett Mercy has a goal for the university to become a Catholic university leader in professional and healthcare education. So we believe that working with the seminary, another premier, well-respected Catholic institution, will enhance both of our institutions, certainly contribute to our overall goal to be this Catholic university leader and to strengthen really our Catholic and mercy mission as well. We also see great potential for collaboration and broadening of experience for our students and for the seminary students as well. So we certainly have more work to do, but as you know, we have signed a letter of intent and we have worked with each other behind closed doors. And I really want to point out, and it's important for you to know, that we had only shared internal memos about this with each other. Neither of us have ever issued a press release for any outside consumption. It was our plan all along to speak to this body first and inform you of our intentions. However, unfortunately, you all got to see the information in the press as opposed to hearing it directly from us. So we are indeed grateful for this opportunity now to speak with you directly about this exciting collaboration. And so I also just wanted you to know that this is fully supported by our Board of Trustees, and we've been working together with them along with the seminary as well to move this forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but I will let my colleague Bishop Senior speak as well.
Well, thank you so much, Dr. DiMilio, and thank you to all the supervisors and everyone at Lower Gwinnett Township for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. We are very, very excited about the opportunity that a collaboration with Gwinnett Mercy presents to St. Charles Baromea Seminary and the opportunity to relocate our seminary to Lower Gwinnett Township and on Gwinnett Campus. Just a little bit of background. First of all, St. Charles Baromea Seminary was founded in 1832. We are the oldest institution of Catholic higher education in the Archdiocese of Philadelphia. The Archdiocese is comprised of the five counties of southeastern Pennsylvania. Founded in 1832 to where we are at Wynwood, and the Overbrook is what we call it generally. We've been there for 150 years, but it's actually our fourth location. This year, academic year, is the 150-year, 50th year that St. Charles has been operating there. This year, St. Charles, as we begin the spring semester, we have 147 seminarians, which is actually comparatively large, probably the second-largest of the Catholic seminaries in the United States. We're very pleased that we are in collaboration with that student population with 14 dioceses who entrust their seminarians to St. Charles, mainly from the mid-Atlantic region, but from other parts of the United States as well as from other countries. About half of those 147 students are studying for the Archdiocese of Philadelphia and will be ordained, please God, one day for priests here to be in the Archdiocese to serve. The seminary is an independent academic entity, an independent separate corporation, but is sponsored by the Archdiocese, and that relationship is of course very, very important to Archbishop Perez, our still now recent Archbishop, less than a year. And we're pleased with the opportunity of his commitment to continuing a seminary here as a core ministry of the Archdiocese of Philadelphia. And I say that's important to mention because we have sold the property, as Dr. DiMilio mentioned. A little bit of background on how we came to that point. As I said, we've been on this current campus for 150 years, and the buildings, though very beautiful and majestic and historic, are way oversized for that student population, built for not only a different number of seminarians, but actually built for a very different program than we have today. So we set about, when I became rector in August of 2012, we set about developing a plan to initially to stay on the campus, but to consolidate on one part of the campus. That plan proved to be not feasible from a financial standpoint. The development that required renovation was in excess of $50 million, and that was back in 2015. We had put that plan on hold when, as you may recall, St. Charles Baromea Seminary hosted Pope Francis when he came to Philadelphia for the World Meaning of Families. As wonderful opportunity as that was, it really was a priority when you have the Pope coming and everything else was on the back burner. And we had to put off doing a capital campaign, a feasibility study for a capital campaign, which did not support our staying on the campus, did not support that. And after working through with a consultant from Grant Thornton in their educational, higher education unit, we came to the conclusion that St. Charles needed to relocate, and to do so in partnership with another university, or at least as in the case of Gwinnett initially, where we took this come to fruition to be on the campus of another Catholic university. So we studied a year, it took a year to study the, there are 11 actual, actually 11 Catholic colleges and universities in the Archdiocese of Philadelphia. We looked at all of them, and at that time, by the spring of 2017, we settled on Newman University in Aston. We worked with them for about two years, and for a variety of reasons, in November of 2019, came to the conclusion that that wasn't going to work out, at least the way we had hoped. And so we reopened conversations with several other Catholic universities, Gwinnett Mercy being one. We were very pleased to very quickly discover that Gwinnett was at the top of the list for a couple of reasons. First of all, it is, again, a dynamic college/university environment, which is serving a broad constituency of students, which, first of all, as Dr. DiMilio alluded to, enriches the experience for young men who are information for the priesthood. And many other seminaries have been affiliated or relocated to college campuses throughout our country. The other advantage that this presents to St. Charles is the possibility of acquiring Alexandria Hall, which is a relatively new, I believe just 15-years-old dormitory that houses 200 students. It presented a significant opportunity for us because cost of the development and timing was really important for us. So as mentioned, the seminary sale of the property was actually completed in May of 2019. We sold the campus to Mainline Health, and we have five years on the campus to continue to operate there. So we're under somewhat of a time constraint to get a plan in place and begin to move forward. So having Alexandria Hall on such a beautiful campus in such, with such a dynamic university really was wonderful for us, and we set it into a conversation with Gwinnett. We were very pleased that they were receptive, as Dr. DiMilio has mentioned, and see it as an opportunity for Gwinnett as well, mutually beneficial for both institutions. And we focused initially on the transaction, the real estate transaction, but as, again, as Dr. DiMilio has mentioned, we do see the possibility of collaboration down the road, both in operations and also perhaps in a way that could mutually benefit both institutions, academic affiliation, for example. And we have found too that there is also mutual interest and support from our benefactors, a number of benefactors who are very interested in the seminary and its mission, and also interested in supporting and helping the mission of Gwinnett Mercy. So we did sign a letter of intent at the beginning of December, and we're very excited about this as it moves forward. St. Charles is a very dynamic and active seminary community. We're very pleased to have that commitment of this local church to continue to sponsor a seminary here. I would also mention a little bit of background, again, information. In addition to the formation of future priests or education of them, St. Charles also operates, has two other divisions. The School of Theological Studies, which serves men and women, people of all faiths, who like to come to lay men and women, I should say, to study and study theology, and also the School of Deaconal Formation. So about 50 men from the Archdiocese of Philadelphia are currently in formation to become permanent deacons in parishes of the Archdiocese. The seminarians themselves are within four different programs. We have a full undergraduate program with a Bachelor of Arts in Philosophy, then a graduate program, which is called Pretheology, for men who have already been through college and when they enter the seminary, that's a two-year program, and then a four-year graduate school or theologiate program for a Master of Arts in Theology and a Masters in Divinity for our seminaries. Then we have a smaller program, which is located and will continue to be located in Conshohocken at St. Matthew's Rectory. That's our spiritual year, kind of, for those of you who may be familiar with religious life, very similar to a vichy experience for, like for the Jesuits or for others. Couple of other facts, St. Charles is, again, as I mentioned, serving 14 dioceses for priests who will become priests and then return to those dioceses. We also work with six different religious congregations. The largest number of seminarians or religious congregation come from the Vincentians, the congregation for the mission. Those of you who are familiar with Germantown and the Shrine of the Miraculous Metal, that's where the Vincentians are located here, and they chose St. Charles a few years ago for their graduate students, their seminarians. So again, a large relative, for seminaries, a large Catholic seminary, working with a very dynamic community at Gwinnett Mercy in Lower Gwinnett is very exciting for us. Just on a personal note, I'll share with you that I'm very familiar with the campus at Gwinnett because I grew up in the area. It's home for me. My dear mother passed away just almost a year ago. She was a graduate and I'm of Gwinnett Mercy University, and she went to school, she was a working mom, and she went to school when I was still a little boy and spent a lot of summer days while she was going to class, running around that campus and being very kindly carried forward, watched over by some Sisters of Mercy. So I feel like I know the campus. I'm from St. Rose of Lima Parish in North Wales, and my family stayed there till we sold our home in Upper Gwinnett, actually in August of 2019, graduate of Lansdale Catholic. And my family actually moved to the area in the early 1950s when my dad was working, but they got a, he got a part-time job as a caretaker on the Luskome Estate, which was, I guess, spread between Evans Road and Meeting House Road, not too far from where we hope that St. Charles Baromea Seminary could be located, and eventually moved to Ambler, and then in 1966 to North Wales, to our home. So it's, I am also, by the way, very familiar also with the area through my weekend ministry as a priest since 2014 at St. Alphonsus in Maple Glen. And I lived for seven years at St. Anthony's in Ambler back in the late 80s and early 90s. So we're very, very hopeful about this and grateful, particularly grateful for the opportunity to talk about this at this early stage in our development and in our conversations with all of you this evening. So thanks so much for your time and for this opportunity. Kristin?
Yeah, so I have the very easy task of pulling all this off. There's no pressure from either of these two, but we know that everything starts with you and your staff, and we have a lot of work ahead of us. We are hoping that we can hit the ground running and get started with staff in discussing what needs to be done in order to actually get the seminary on campus, which is our goal. And I have some slides to show you. These are some pictures of their location down on the main line as it exists today. You might recognize these from when the Pope visited. There is a series of six photographs that we can, we can float through a little, if you wouldn't mind. I think it's Jamie who's operating. So I want to point out, well, first of all, that eagle is not part of the statue, and I did finally have the guts to ask the question. It landed fortunately at a time when someone had a camera, so that is one of their favorite shots. But they actually can bring these statues with them to the campus, and we do have plans to locate certain statues around where we can. Also, the stained glass from the chapel can come. We're not sure that it would be installed immediately because we need the funds to do that, but we certainly know that these religious relics and statues can come with, which is exciting. Next slide, please. So I mean, their building is just, it's majestic, in my opinion, and we hope for the similar standards here in Lower Gwinnett, as I'm sure you would expect. Next slide, please. Next slide. So this slide shows you the amount of land that the seminary wishes to acquire, what's been negotiated with the university. So you know, I've been hired by the university, as has Bowler Engineering, and then there's a team, probably half of which are the participants on this call, that work for the seminary and then work for the university, but we have to work together in order to pull this off. So if you have any technical questions, I have many people that can answer them. But you can see here that we've designated the back right corner of the main campus as you come in off of Evans Road as approximately 15 and a half acres of the main campus. The main campus is 160 acres. Next slide, please. So staying here for a moment, on the left-hand side is the main campus, and you can see in the back right-hand corner, we've superimposed the area of land that the seminary is interested in on this plan to give you a sense of scale and how it fits in with the entire campus. The land to the right is the East Campus. That's another 150 acres. That was the land that President DiMilio was referring to earlier. So when they did acquire the East Campus, we started having conversations about how these properties could be merged. The left side, the main campus, is comprised of four parcels. They're all zoned residentially, and there's been a series of special exceptions that have been granted over the years for the university. The right side, the East Campus, that has an industrial zone. So we were talking about, you know, let's clean this up maybe and merge these parcels and come up with a university-driven zoning district that could, you know, reflect what really happens on these campuses and then what could happen. Next slide, please. So these are preliminary, and I do want to stress that. I also want to stress that this is the best-case scenario plan for the seminary. This is their pie-in-the-sky plan, if they could have everything they want. Along the bottom is Assumption Drive, which was recently installed by the university. It's the Loop Road from Evans Road throughout the campus. So entering from Evans would be to the left side. The first building that you see in front of you is a proposed gymnasium, and you can see a circular area in the front. That's an area where we might install one of those statues. We tried to limit the impact on the ground, especially in this corner, because we back up to residential and we're very mindful of that. That existing buffer that is there today along the rear property line is proposed to remain. What you see in dark green are those wooded areas that create a very nice buffer from the residential property. Moving from the gym, you'll have the Student Life Center. Again, there's another entrance down on the left where we could do architectural features, landscaping, and the installation of a statue to support the entrance there. Moving down, the next building is the chapel that is proposed. It's been purposely located in the center of campus because we want it to be the hub of where people congregate. Now up, the next building, which is an L shape, although turned a little, yes, that is Assumption Hall. That is the existing residential hall on the campus that the seminary would acquire. To the right of that are two buildings. These are proposed residential halls as well. We're not sure if they will both be built or one will be built. That's why we did them in pieces, so those decisions can be made in the future. Again, we can do landscaping and hardscaping between them. We have areas for recreation. This portion of the campus is 65% open. If we just look at the 15 acres, and clearly we're not, we're looking at 160 or 310 acres in total. Down further on the bottom right, there is the existing visitation house. We envisioned that being renovated into residential use as well, maybe four suites in there of some sort. And then to the right of that is just a maintenance building. We are looking at this, as I said, a full build-out. You know, if funds don't permit, maybe the gym doesn't get built, or maybe one of the residence halls, but we wanted to at least design something that would show a best-case scenario and the greatest impact. So the nice thing about working with the seminary and them having gone through that proposed development down in Lower Marion is that they really had to figure out what their needs were. They spent years and about $1.5 million in soft costs just developing the plan for the restoration there so they could stay on that campus. So they had to come up with, you know, what are our parking demands? What, you know, what staff comes in and out of the campus, and we really have a great handle on that. So what we'd like to do, path forward, this is just a broad stroke, you know, aerial view of what our proposals are. If you flip to the next plan, this will just show you what exists on this part of campus. What's darkened here are those existing buildings as well as the parking lot, just to give you an idea of what's new and what's existing, if you could toggle back. So leaving this meeting today, what we'd like is, you know, to start working with your staff, get to work, get these buildings approved. We are very mindful of the environmental sensitivity to Lower Gwinnett. That is definitely something that's been repeated in all of our conversations with the consultants. We will continue to look at ways to mitigate the impact environmentally, mitigate the impact to the campus generally. But this is a great way to guarantee that Gwinnett Mercy, you know, stays, and the fact that the seminary is purchasing this land shows you their commitment for, you know, a long-time existence here in Lower Gwinnett Township. So that's all I have to say. We'd like to walk away feeling that this is as exciting to you as it is to us and just get to work with the staff and consultants.
Well, it's very impressive. When I first heard about this, I had to hear it twice because this isn't a, the seminary, seminaries don't usually move very often. They're usually fixtures for some, some cases, centuries. And the fact that it's moving here, you know, took my breath away when I first heard about it. It's a great addition to Gwinnett Mercy University as well, and by inference to the township. You know, as you know, there's land development and all the normal processes that have to go through, but this is an outstanding campus and the seminary is, you couldn't ask for a better new partner as far as the residents or in the township is concerned. I would imagine that these buildings and so forth, by the time they're all done, would be as magnificent as their current buildings or something, something in that vein, maybe a more modern version of it. I'm not sure where the Pope would stay when he comes to visit, but I'm sure we can find a place for him somewhere. I'm sure the campus would make some facilities available. It's just a marvelous addition. It looks like it's well-planned out, and when you're ready, when you're ready to bring plans in, I'm sure the staff will be very receptive to executing its normal processes to move this along. Do you have any idea when this, all of this might happen?
As fast as possible. The clock is ticking for their relocation, so the pressure's on. I know Bowler Engineering has already done the survey work. They've done the topo and the environmental features so that we can start designing right away, so as soon as possible.
So when do you have to be out of your current location?
We would hope to be on the campus at Gwinnett for the academic year '24-'25. That would, that would fall into line correctly for us. So that would be, you know, three more academic years at our current location. And that would be, that would be when, that's consistent with the timeline with our, the owner of the property now, Mainline Health.
Yeah, that doesn't leave you a lot of time. In the scheme of things, you're going to have to be moving pretty quickly to meet those dates.
Again, that's one of the good things about Alexandria Hall for us. You know, it's, you know, that was going to need very little, relatively little renovation for us. We, you know, we'd be able to move in there tomorrow, you know, so that's great.
Yeah, it is. So I'm, like I said, I'm very impressed with all of this, and I knew it was happening a little bit earlier maybe than some other people, but still a very, very exciting time. Is there anybody on staff that would have any questions? For the bishop or Dr. Mello or your attorney?
I'd like to, I'd like to address the bishop. Bishop Senior, remember you in the 80s at St. Anthony's with who I call Saint Monsignor Sullivan, as you know. Welcome you back, having children also graduating from Lansdale Catholic and knowing this is really your home base area. Thank you for presenting tonight as you have. We are excited, and we do have some questions and concerns that can be addressed by the staff later on. But just remembering you in the 80s with Saint Monsignor Sullivan, I just had to say, welcome back.
Oh, thank you so much.
We look forward to, as Mark had mentioned, working with the staff and with your people. I do have some questions for them later on down the line, but thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Brandt.
And if I could, I'd like to second all that Mr. Brandt had to say. And yes, Deanne is the largest landowner or the university in Lower Gwinnett Township, but she's also one of our favorite landowners too. So you picked a good partner there, Bishop. And I had the pleasure of sitting to your right during Deanne's installation. I spoke right before you. And you baptized or confirmed or gave First Holy Communion to one or all of my four children at some point in time. So welcome home. Are you going to be launching any kind of capital campaign to support this development?
We, while we're launching a capital, our, our hope is to, to build what we need to build within the, totally staying within the proceeds of the sale of the, of the Overbrook property. That, that being said, we also, for the long term sustainability of the seminary have, and we have done a feasibility study for this, we want to do a capital campaign. So as soon as it's definite where we're going, that everything is in place, we're going to start the capital campaign and the, it will be a comprehensive campaign which will enable potential benefactors to choose between the endowment or to support a specific aspects of the, of the development itself, of the development of the seminary. So yes, we're hoping to have a, a capital campaign underway, both for the endowment, but also to offset some of the cost of the, of the project now. And we had done a feasibility for study, actually the decision to leave Overbrook was greatly influenced by the results of that study, that people get, get really excited about the, the prospect of the seminary being adjacent to a college campus, the opportunities that presents, and I want to support it.
Yeah. Well, you have plenty of time to say goodbye. 150 years as your home. That's a long time.
Yes, I jokingly say it's our fourth location, but we have been there for 150 years. So we haven't, we don't move that often, but.
Yeah, we're, we're always happy to have long-term tenants, right? Are there any other comments from staff or supervisors? Is there any member of the public who might have any questions?
I don't see any hand raised, but anyone can raise, hit, raise your hand and I'll allow you in. No emails.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do have a hand raised. Nathan, Nathan, where are you, Nathan?
I'm right here. Just had a quick question here. One thing. So my name's, I guess, quick intro. My name's Nathan Leung. I graduated from Wisconsin High School in 2018. And I live in the township. And I've been trying to follow these meetings a little bit more closely, just to get more involved in the township. And one thing that I really respect about kind of you, the supervisors, is you guys prioritize on prioritization of trails in the community. Like I think we have like 25 miles of trails and they were a big part of like, growing up for me, like as a member of the cross country team at Wisconsin High School. And I was just wondering if there are any plans like to build like trails that are open to the public as part of these new developments, just because I know like going through Gwinnett Mercy is like a very popular route for a lot of runners in the community. And I'm concerned whether that would change under the new ownership.
That's a good question.
So Nathan, we haven't gotten there yet. You know, we're just getting started. I can tell you that, you know, the university owns the park and the trail system next door that everyone enjoys. So I would be certain that we would definitely want to incorporate some trail system throughout the campus. The exact location or how it'd work, I couldn't speak to at this point, but it's definitely top of mind.
Thanks.
Also have Mark Schaefer has a question.
You hear me?
Yes, Mark. Go ahead.
Actually, Nathan asked exactly what I was going to ask myself, because I'm also a trail user and I live across the street. And I know that the trail and trail is one of the most popular ones in the township. So he asked a question. I appreciate your answer and we look forward to working together on new trails.
Thank you, Doctor. Are there any more hands up, Craig?
I don't see any. I just want to check to contact us in case there is an email, but there is none. So that's all we have.
Wow. I'd like to thank the university, Deanne, Christian, Monsignor. I gave you a promotion last time. I called you Cardinal Bishop. So thank you for coming. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like, but there's a lot of, a lot of routine-ness in this. But members of the public are always welcome.
Thank you so much, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thanks for the time you set aside for us. We really appreciate it and we look forward to working with you.
Likewise.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is we have to amend the code for EAC. Our solicitor, Neil, could you explain the change, please?
Sure. This is more in the nature of a technical amendment to the code as it relates to the Environmental Advisory Council. There are two specific changes that are being made. And these changes are being made to comply with the state statute that governs the creation and administration of environmental advisory councils. The first change is to confirm that the EAC is advisory only and it coordinates its activities with the township manager, the board of supervisors, the planning commission, and the township staff. The second change is a correction to the existing code, which originally indicated that it was the council that would designate its own chair. In fact, the state statute requires that the chair of the EAC be appointed by the board of supervisors. So those are the two corrections to bring the code in line with the state statute.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the other supervisors? Take that as a no. Are there any questions for the members of the public?
No questions.
Not saying anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept these changes of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Yeah, the ayes have it. Next on the agenda is an appointment of the chair of EAC. I'm going to table that because there's still some discussion among members of the EAC. So we'll have to take that up at a separate meeting or another, another meeting of the board. Next up is authorization to purchase a Toro Smoke Spray Master Max fertilizer pesticide application. Fred, are you in the meeting?
Here, I'm here.
Okay. Could you explain what this is all about?
Uh, yeah, currently we spread fertilizer on the athletic fields in a granular form. And it's very weather dependent and it's also a little more expensive than liquid fertilizer. So we'd like to get this piece of equipment, be able to spread the liquid fertilizer, and then it can also be used to spray pesticide, you know, weed killer in the parks too, which we do use a liquid pesticide. But more or less it's hand sprayers or backpack sprayers. So this just increases our capability and it's a little less weather dependent to put down the fertilizer on the athletic fields.
Well, okay.
Fred, do you have this budgeted at all?
Yeah, it was presented with the capital budget.
Okay.
Yes, we budgeted $15,000 for this piece of equipment. You're looking at a Co-Stars bid for, from turf equipment in the amount of $11,912.07.
Great, great.
Craig, there may be some people who don't know what Co-Stars is. So could you explain that briefly?
It's a state contract vendor that provides their numbers through state contracts so that there is no, they're not supposed to have a lower number than that for the municipalities so that we don't have to look at different pricing and try to negotiate different prices through other vendors. So it's supposed to be the lowest priced contract through the state.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the board that have any questions on this?
I do. I know last year, a previous Public Works Director came before us with the purchase. Was it related to fertilizer? Was it just related to irrigation? I know that it was related to baseball fields and our field maintenance.
That was a grooming piece of equipment for the infields and the trails throughout the township.
It was grooming?
Yes.
Okay. So it has nothing to do with this pesticide and fertilizer applicator?
No, no, this would be a different piece of equipment.
Are there any other questions for board members?
I'd like to make the motion, we approve the purchase.
Let's see, are there any members of the public have any questions on this?
I do not see anything, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'll take that as a no. We, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Who made that second? I'm sorry, it was Mr. Brandon. Okay, thank you.
Next up is authorization to update the SCADA system to a wireless on the pump stations. I'm not sure who's taking this, Fred or Jamie?
Jamie's probably a little more familiar with it than I am.
I'm sure. This is the part of an upgrade that we started last year. I think you'll remember that Mike DiStefano got authorization for what was really phase two of a three-phase project. And that was to upgrade all of the hardware software licensing and to have this interface with our tracer. So that was complete. And now the actual first phase is to replace the dial-up modems in each of the pump stations with wireless modems. So this is a request for that. We had covered it during the, it was included in the sewer capital budget. We had budgeted 40,000 and the quote that we have is for $35,802. And there is the, my memo actually is misstated because there is the opportunity to reduce that by 2000, but they have to do a radio test with the two Montgomery Township pump stations just to make sure the signal is strong enough. And if it is, then they'll use them and they'll reduce the cost by $2,180.
Now, Jamie, I, this was an ongoing conversation that you were involved in. We brought the vendors in. Mike DiStefano was in with it. Now we're going to fully integrate with our information system. Is that right, from Tracer? That, that took a long time. I think we started that back in what, 2018?
Yeah, it started in 18 and then it was, all of that, the interfacing with Tracer was all worked out. So it actually didn't come before the board for approval until February of 2019. And then there was delays, of course, with COVID, but, but they, they were able to complete that.
So we're, we're integrated. At some point, I think we might need a a review by the board of Tracer's capabilities now that we're much more integrated with them. And for those on the call who don't know what it is, it's an information system where previously we're a lot of our, a lot of the work we did was manual. So we brought Tracer in a few years ago to help us automate a lot of our manual systems. And this was one of the legs of the automation, just so everybody knows. All right. So are there any questions from the members of the board? Now take that as a no. Are there any questions from anybody in the audience?
Do not see anything, Mr. Chairman.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up is acceptance of the estimate from AMO Environmental. Craig, could you talk about that a little bit and describe what an act two closeout is, please?
Oh, boy. The AMO Environmental Decisions is the company that we are, we have been, I don't want to say in, we've been in contact with, we'll say, since 2005. The board purchased a property from Cognis Corporation back in 2005. And at the time, we received a closeout, we'll say, a, a release of liability back then to use the property for non-residential use. The non-residential use, we still are not using it as non-residential use. However, the non-residential use is now consider, residential use is now considered a park. So Penambler Park is the location that I'm speaking of. So there's a few items down there to have an act two closeout, which would allow us to continue to use the area as a park. The act two would require a report and go to the DEP for their blessing for us to continue to use it as a park. We have some plans drawn up by our engineer. And we have Neil Stein working on an environmental covenant that would help us close out this, this report. The only thing we need AMO to do is because they have a relationship already with DEP and this site, we thought it would be best to bring them in and help us out, help us close this out. Their original proposal was to do everything and we eliminated, we went to our consultants and were able to save some money on that. But all our consultants believe we should be using AMO to help us with the closeout report for the DEP. So we're looking for them to help us out in the amount of $37,303. And that would give us the report and any administrative documentation that they have and consultation between our engineer, them and our solicitor.
And now AMO, they were doing some work there for a long time, weren't they? Prior to our, as I recall, when we met with them, they had, they were very familiar with the site for many, many years, maybe decades going back. So.
Yeah, June of 2005 is when Cognis hired them to, to do all the environmental work down there.
Right, right. So in DEPs, when we had the DEP call, they were very familiar with AMO, AMO, as I recall.
Correct.
So I'm, I'm, I can understand why we would go with this estimate. Are there any questions from members of the board?
No.
Are there any questions from members of the public?
I do not see any hand raised.
Okay. Could I have a motion to accept the estimate?
So moved.
Can I, can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next up is an authorization for joint defense agreement between Lower Gwinnett, Upper Dublin, Whitpain, and, and White Marsh. Now this, for those that you may not know, this has been in the papers lately. It's been in the patch. And Neil, could you give us a 50,000-foot explanation of this?
Certainly. As you're no doubt aware, Ambler Borough is trying to convert itself from a public utility to a municipal authority, we believe, to allow rate increases without public utility commission oversight. There are other reasons as well. Whitpain Township, White Marsh, Lower Gwinnett, and Upper Dublin, through its attorneys, are in opposition to that application. And it's anticipated that those municipalities, their consultants, their attorneys, managers, other personnel will be sharing materials and data and other information that should be kept within the confines of the attorney-client privilege. However, if I were to get a document, for example, from Paul Leonard, Upper Dublin not being my client, there may be an argument by Ambler that that document is not covered by attorney-client privilege. So the purpose of the joint defense and joint privilege agreement is to make it clear that any document that any documents that we share amongst ourselves come within the confines of the attorney-client privilege and cannot be disclosed to third parties without the consent and approval of the other municipalities.
Okay, so so what, what our solicitor was describing, this is a, this is for the drinking water services that Ambler provides, not any other of these services like the sewer, sewer services. So are there any members of the board that have any questions on this?
No.
Are there any members of the public that have any questions on this?
Does not look like it, Mr. Chairman.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes, thank you. Okay, next up is authorization to purchase electronic speed signs. Is our chief still on, Paul?
Yes.
Okay, could you speak to this briefly, Paul?
Sure, so what we're requesting is permission to purchase two speed alert signs. We talked about this past, when we're going over to capital budget. The two that, or the sign that I'm requesting matches our speed trailer that we use. It's the same company. They're out in State College. All Traffic Solutions and they're a co-star, it's a company. This unit that I'm talking about, so there's two different sizes. There's a twelve-inch model and a fifteen-inch model of the sign itself. The speed trailer that we have is an eighteen-inch sign. It is recommended to go from a twelve or a fifteen, depending on the speed limit that you put it on. This, this quote here is for the fifteen-inch display sign. These are very mobile. They can be used in all weather and all seasons. As you can see by the picture that I attached, they attach to any pole and they have a solar panel that attaches above them that keeps the unit charged for the duration that we leave it there. The only downfall would be if we're in a really pre-canopy area, we, the solar is not going to work. This particular unit here, they, the price would be fifty-one hundred, five thousand one hundred and five dollars each. And what that includes is a fifteen hundred dollar a year, the first year, you'd have to buy the suite. And the suite is the software program that we currently have with the speed trailer, it's the same program. And that gives us cloud storage of all the data, ability to get the data right from your desktop. It also includes any updates to the software and it includes a full warranty for anything that would go wrong with the unit. They would send, placement parked out, the unit would be fixed. You know, as we've done in the, in case of the speed trailer, they sent somebody out to pick it up, take it back to State College. We talked a lot about this for a while. I've asked for two units for right now and this would be approximately two hundred dollars over asking budget, two hundred and ten dollars. We budgeted ten thousand. The reason it's two hundred and ten dollars over is I went with the larger display sign being the inch, which I'm talking about in that picture there, is the forty-five. That forty-five, the display board would be fifteen inches by fifteen inches and not twelve. Still a bit more obvious for a person to see it that, that is their speed that they're.
Paul, a couple of questions. Paul?
Yes.
Couple of questions. Something like this you had, it shows that it's fairly, there's no canopy near it. Are signs like this going to work on, say, Penland Blue Bell Pike near Dager Road?
I, I, I think we'd have to say, we'd have to be diligent in picking the correct spot. I'm sure there are areas on Penland Pike that it will work and there's areas that it probably will not be as effective. In the winter time, with no leaves, we're going to get more sunshine. You know, in the spring, when the leaves come, in the summer, we may run into shadows. So we're going to have to be careful about where we put it.
Well, maybe you could work with Fred too about other areas in the township that may, we can have a right-of-way where we can do some trimming, not just on Penland Blue Bell Pike, but other parts of the township. Where if we trim back, we could use it in more areas. That, that's was one question. And I think it's definitely something we, we should go with. I know you had it in your budget. The other question is, other than this particular speed sign, what it does is just flash so the driver can see they're going too fast. It doesn't, it doesn't record any.
No, it does. This particular unit is, what I would say is on the higher end. You can, you can display this for as long as you want in a stealth mode where it won't flash anything and it will record all the speeds so we get an accurate data of what the average, what the speeds are on a particular road. We can set this to be, you know, I know there was a lot of questions over signs, digital signs. We can, we can program this to turn off at ten o'clock at night.
All right, but it doesn't record any license plates of cars, right?
No, it doesn't take any photos. It does have a camera mobility that if somebody is messing with the sign, we will get alerts. It does have its own modem and it can communicate with cell phones. So as in with the speed trailer, when the speed trailer was hit by a car, all of our patrol units received an alert instantly that somebody was messing with the trailer. It was a car, but this, this, this unit has the same, same capability that if somebody does mess with the sign, we're going to get an alert on our phones.
Paul, I'm sure what they're using on Roosevelt Boulevard in North, in Philadelphia on Route One there, those types of signage is in a different class, I'm sure.
Correct.
And it's way out of our budget at this time. But sometime, and it doesn't have to be tonight, I'd like to get your opinion on the cost, how they're working down there and so forth.
Okay.
Something in the future.
Sure.
So, all right, thank you.
Okay, Paul, I know we've had a conversation about these for quite some time, on and off. With respect to Penland Blue Bell and McKean and a few others. So this is the first purchase of two, so we can get them in both directions? Is that correct?
We could, we could do that. We could book ones. We can do whatever we choose. Absolutely. We, we, these are, these are mobile. Lot easier to set up, lot easier, it don't inconvenience, snow, salt, plowing, doesn't interfere. You know, we'll take good care of them. But yeah, it's up to us where we decide to, you know, place them.
So is these work out okay? Do you have any plans to request funds for additional signs?
That was, yeah, that, remember, that was a lot of the debate of how many do we need? And I, I'm, I'm comfortable with two to start and let's see how they work, see how they're, see what the, what they tell us as far as where we place them and what the speeds are.
Okay. Are there any other questions from supervisors?
Thank you. Or Chief Kenny, is there, is there? Well, first I want to know, are other municipalities around us utilizing this similar type of sign?
Yes.
Yes?
I missed the last part of what you asked, you know.
With success?
Well, I guess it depends on what we quantify as, you know, the success. I don't know the answer to that, whether or not they're seeing decreased speed. They cannot use to issue tickets. They are a radar device, so we can't use them for any enforcement. I would think that the perception from the neighbors would be that, that it is going down. But I, I don't know the answer to that.
And the second question I had is, does this mean, this does not mean you're going to retire the trailers? Do you have, I guess, plans to use them in conjunction with the trailer that we have?
We do. I actually asked our vendor to get a quote to see what our speed trailer is worth. The speed trailer is close to ten thousand dollars. There are a lot more money. I'd like to see possibly trading that in and use this, which is more.
Versatile.
It's more versatile and less intrusive in a neighborhood. And we've placed the speed trailer on certain roads. Residents do not want them in front of their house. You know, we don't, we don't own them off and we're very worried about them getting hit and causing an accident, so. You know, that's something I'm looking into, see if maybe we could trade that in and purchase another one of these. The purpose of that speed trailer, we don't seem to use it as a message board. It's not only a speed trailer, it's a message. If we wanted to put a message out that a road is going to be closed. Now, the county currently has so many message boards that we've purchased since, you know, going back five, ten years ago, where if we, if we needed to put a message out, you see them, they're over at Monca right now for COVID testing. They're all over, they're county message boards. We have one next to the side of the building, right outside the garage, that are much larger, much easier to read if you're driving by. The speed trailer, when it was purchased, it does utilize that, but we don't use it for that purpose. But we're, we're taking a big machine like that and not using it to its full capabilities. So if it's worth a, a good trade-in value, I would propose that we end up trading it in and purchase more individual speeds.
So do you have a timeframe as far as how long you want to evaluate these new signs before making a determination if more need to be purchased or if it will be beneficial to purchase more?
I think you, I think at a minimum, we leave them there for two months, three months and, and collect. We need data not only during school year, you know, and it's a tough time to really get an accurate data with COVID, with people are not driving. So there is a lot less driving on the road. I think Chad was on and, you know, it's something we've all noticed. But that, that, that's something that I'm open for discussion with the whole board that we could share the data as we're going along and see what it's telling us. The, you know, is it time to move it on?
Thank you.
I have a question, please. So the, the way it works is that a car is coming down the street and presumably going too fast. They see that their speed is above the limit, so they slow down. Where is the data being captured? Is it being captured, the deceleration or the speed when it is passing the sign or where is it that the data is collected?
But from what I've seen from our speed trail, it captures the top speed. So as soon as it recognizes a vehicle, it will start to flood, you know. The, the sign would be set for, just say the speed limit is thirty-five. The sign would stay solid if somebody was going under thirty-five. And that data would be collected. If the car was traveling thirty, we'd get a date, time, direction and the vehicle's top speed. If they would go over thirty-five miles an hour, it would flash to try and get their attention. They even have red and blue lights on the outside edge to signify a police call. If they go forty-eight, we're going to get a note, we're going to get the data that at this particular date and time, a vehicle traveling east on Welsh Road was traveling forty-eight miles an hour. We'll get, we'll capture the data of every vehicle that goes past that sign. And it, it's not when it passes it, it's when the radar first picks it up, till the time it does go past it, it would capture its top speed. And all that data, that's what we're buying with the, it's called a suite package. It's, it's how our speed trailer works now. It'll tell us, it'll do a traffic count. It'll tell us that, you know, one thousand cars traveled past in a twenty-four hour period. Break it down by the hour, how many cars per hour. It, it breaks down all the data as far, as much as you want it to.
So what, what is our measure of success? Is it that people get acclimated to having the sign there so when they're driving down that stretcher road, then they're not going over? Excuse me, the speed limit or is it that when they see the sign that they slow down going forward? I'm, I'm not quite sure how the data is going to be used.
So if I recall, you know, and my explanation of the data from months ago was, you know, the way I look at a road is, are the, is speeding contributing to traffic accidents? That's the ultimate say of a road and speed. Are we having vehicle accidents on a road and is the cause speeding? Going back to that meeting, that wasn't an answer that everybody wanted to hear. They wanted, you know, the perception is that speeding is occurring everywhere. And so we can fail that perception and, you know, residents of, say, Gypsy Hill Road are complaining that everybody's going fifty-five, sixty miles an hour. And we put this machine out there for months and we come back with an answer of, well, they're not. The speeds are, are, you know, eighty-five percent of the traffic is going the speed limit or less. Ninety percent is going less. So we're just going to answer concerns about what these signs will tell us. We'll be able to answer concerns of residents that is there a speeding problem? And if there is, then the police need to get out there somehow with other tools to enforce it.
Okay, I, I got it. I, I thought the purpose of collecting the data was to show that the sign was having an impact on the speeding. But you're saying the sign is only collecting data to show how fast people are going at their fastest.
Right.
So that.
What the sign will do, and I think Chad would agree with me here, when they become, you will see a dramatic slowing of cars for a two to three week period. And then people will get used to it and go back to their same old habits. It's what will happen. People will go to speed that they feel comfortable on a road. Now, if we can change the driving habits a little bit, that will help. But from what I've seen, the studies I've seen, these machines have an effective time period of two to three weeks and people will go back to their old habits. Chad, I'm going to jump in. That, that seems to be the effectiveness of the sign. If you have anything further to add there, Chad, I'd appreciate it.
Not really. I, I agree with you in terms of their impact when they're placed out there. And, and the hope is, is that to some degree, like, like the chief said, for the most part, people return to their, their normal habits of how they drive that road and what's comfortable traveling at. The hope is, is that maybe you capture a small percentage of people who if they see the signs on a particular road and on a periodic basis, that they recognize that as a potential enforcement area. And that somehow, you know, impacts habits a little bit to, to help keep speeds in the neighborhood of the posted speed limit.
Okay, I, I'm not convinced yet that this is going to have a, a lot of positive effect. If, if we get the data that there's a speeding problem, then is the next step to say, okay, we're going to station officers there or what, what is the next step?
That would be the next step. Oh, in the past, when we've, we've complained and we put the speed trailer out, going back years ago, we used to put strips across the road to mark, to get out of. The speed trailer, and I refer to Rose Lane, Schoolhouse, McKean Road. Trying to think of the last three or four major studies that we've had where the complaint was that everybody was speeding. Then the speed trailer or whatever other machine we've used to document speed has shown that it's not true, that there is no speeding problem. That, yeah, there is an occasional car that comes by that's going way too fast. That happens on every street all the time. But the, you know, what the state looks at. But the, you know, what the state looks at for speed limits is the eighty fifth percentile. What are eighty five percent of the people that are driving on that road, what speed are they driving? And if they're driving under the speed limit, you not have a speeding problem. So. To answer your question, yes. If, if the, the complaint last two weeks ago was. On Woodbridge Road, of all places. It's all cul-de-sacs. That we received a complaint that everybody is speeding on Woodbridge coming out. So we would put a machine down there and try and capture that data and see. Of the probably two hundred and fifty cars a day. How many of them are, are going over the speed limit? What can we do to try and? Involve. And the, the difficulty in the second part, Tessie, would be. In Pennsylvania, local law enforcement, we do not have radar as a tool to enforce speed. So we, you know, it's very difficult to enforce on residential street.
Yeah, I got it. Well, so. I, I'll wait to see what, what happens with these things, but it doesn't seem to me like this is a remedy for speeding. Which is what I thought we were after. This is more like a, a way to collect data to see if there is speeding. So that's a big difference. But. I, I'll just wait and see what kind of information you get. Is it going to be any sort of different information than what we get already with those trailers?
It, it would be the same. It would be the absolute same information, same, same software program.
Why do we need more of them then? I mean, if you're showing already with your studies that there is no speeding in Lower Gwinnett. I, I'm just being very, a, a devil's advocate here because I, I, I thought we were after a, some way to have a solution. Or an impact on speeding, not just that we're going to go out and collect data and disprove that there is speeding.
I think the limitations that we have, Tessie, is that without radar, there's really no way that we can, through enforcement. Reduce it beyond taking measures or steps to try and collect data to find other mitigating ways. There's nothing else really truly that we can do. We could have bumps in the road. We can have these speed radar signs. But beyond that, people are going to speed. If, if that's what the, the perception is that's happening. I think what Chief Kenny showed us through the data is that the perception isn't necessarily reality. We don't have an overarching speeding problem, but people assume that we do because they see cars going faster than they would like. There might be some areas where speeding is a factor or going at a faster rate of speed is perceived as speeding. But. What our goal was to try and mitigate as best we can, and the only way we can mitigate is through the collection of data. It's really just changing the tool that we're using from the big trailer to these more mobile signs. So that we can move them place to place and let, be less cumbersome and less intrusive to neighborhoods and neighbors and on the street. That's my interpretation of what's been presented to us thus far.
Yeah. Well. Again, I'll wait and see what good this does, but it doesn't seem to me like it's worth investing in these things.
And. You know, this conversation. Going back a few months ago, went from. You know, I think Danielle will recall, you know, the question was, how many do we need? It went from two to four to eight. You know, there's really no answer. How many do we need? To remember that. I, I was not against flying eight, but, you know, we'd be talking, you know, eighty thousand dollars. Not eighty. Yeah, they're five thousand a piece, they're five thousand a unit. It, it's, it's just another tool. That will. Answer residents' concerns that they have a speeding problem and. I think most people would like to have this on their street. Because they will have an effect. It will slow people down. The question is for how long? That's the question. You know, if it's there all the time, they're going to get used to it. And, and we'll set it. You know, as we do our speed trailer that, you know, the last thing you want is for a young kid, a young driver to say, can I, can I get it to hit a hundred? No. You set them, if you're going over fifteen or twenty over the speed limit, it doesn't, it doesn't do anything. The display just goes black. It records the data. We'll see it. But trying to impress friends won't see it. You don't want to encourage somebody to try and, you know, throw a fastball at a hundred miles an hour.
No, it, it's just, it's just a more modernized tool that's more mobile, that's more adaptive and versatile, that allows us to collect the data we've been collecting in a more efficient way.
Absolutely.
Okay. Are there any more questions from the supervisors? Are there any questions from members of the public?
Do have one from Brooks. Brooks, if you want to unmute yourself. You can ask the question yourself. If not, I can read the question.
Yeah, this is just a question. They seem to be clamped to a, to a pole. Can they be easily removed if someone was inclined to do so?
My knowledge books, they are locked. And like I say, there is, there is a built in sensor that if somebody does mess with the unit. Our patrols will get an alert to their cell phones.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions out there? Anybody raise their hands? Craig?
I do not see anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Can I have a motion to authorize a purchase of an electronic speed sign?
I'm moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Is it this S with a S? Signs?
Yes, there's two signs in this.
Two signs. That's, that's what I thought. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Paul, don't go too far. This is, you're looking for an authorization to purchase two new police vehicles.
Right. So the, the first one we're going to talk about here, A, is it, is the request to purchase a two thousand twenty one Chevy Tahoe. To replace current marked two thousand fifteen Chevrolet Tahoe. It is, it is within the budget estimate for two thousand twenty one. The, the current vehicle, forty five three, is. Is basically as parked as an emergency spare vehicle at the present time. It's burning oil tremendously. And the fear is that if we keep driving it on patrol, we're going to blow the engine up. So at the request of our mechanic, we parked it probably two to three months ago. And it is basically as a, a last resort vehicle at this time. So that's the first one. The second one is for a Ford. Police Interceptor, which is a, the Ford Explorer police vehicle. The Police Interceptor is basically a Ford Explorer. Which will replace a current Ford Explorer, which is a year two thousand thirteen. And this vehicle is beat. It doesn't have the amount of miles that we've seen in Tahos. It has a little over seventy thousand miles, but the rust is terrible. The wear and tear on the inside of the vehicle is terrible. It is the only Ford Explorer that we have in the police fleet. And some of our smaller officers seem to handle the Explorer a lot better. That would be their vehicle of choice, a, where, had a choice to drive a certain vehicle. And of course, you know. If somebody's not comfortable driving a bigger Tahoe, I want to have another option. So the Ford Explorer also, I will. Intercept the question before it comes out. It is not the hybrid Ford Explorer. And that is on purpose. The hybrid model is approximately five thousand dollars more. To purchase and other municipalities in Montgomery County are having a lot of difficulty. Repairs and breakdowns on the current two thousand twenty hybrid models. And in discussions with other police chiefs, it's been recommended to stay away from them. I see them at Bergy Ford. If you drive in their parking lot, you'll see anywhere from fifteen to twenty police vehicles in there all the time. And a lot of them are Ford Explorers. They're. And do, you know, just out of curiosity, drive through that lot any particular day and there's fifteen to twenty police cars in their lot. Now, they're not all there for that reason, but I have talked to the service people about it. And then there are any number of issues seems to be with this hybrid model. And if you recall, I said, you know, last year with my vehicle, I didn't want to be the experiment. And it's a good thing we're not because they're, they're in for repairs quite often. This particular Ford Explorer, the Interceptor, and, and it also is five thousand dollars cheaper to go with just a straight gas vehicle. So there, there are two requests. They are within budget estimates for two thousand twenty one. And that's all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions now, either one of them.
Paul, can you tell me what the mileage is in the two cars that are being replaced?
The Chevy, again, Mark, I don't know the exact number on the Tahoe. I believe it's around ninety thousand. It was being used as a third vehicle out. It wasn't being used predominantly. But our mechanic came to me around Christmas time, well, actually by Thanksgiving, and said, we have to park it. As you know, we do get a lot of money in. Through Coast Guard, or not through Coast Guard, it's through municipal to trade these vehicles in. He's afraid we're going to blow the engine up. It, it burned, it was burning a quart of oil for us to drive it week to week. So the mileage is not, normally we're getting a hundred thousand miles out of a Tahoe before turning it in. It's not quite there. I think it's around ninety. And. Obviously, I, I followed the recommendation of, of Nick to park the car. It, it is older. It, it's unusual for us to have a top, well, not really. Twenty fifteen, that seems about right. Every five to six years, we're turning one over. Why this one didn't hold up as well as the others, I don't know.
Okay. Are there any questions from the supervisors? Okay, are there any questions from members of the public?
I do not see anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can I have a motion to authorize the purchase of two new police vehicles?
No, moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next up, authorization to advertise bids for the two thousand twenty one road program. So Craig, who's the best one to speak for this? Would this be?
I mean, I could just do it and get this done and over with, hopefully. The road program for two thousand twenty one, we have five, five roads that we're looking at to do a full mill and overlay. We have six roads that we'd like to do the ultra thin bond wearing course for two thousand twenty one. This is just an authorization to advertise a bid and to receive the bids. Looking to advertise it. Well, next week would be the first week in February. Looking to advertise it in February. Open the bids mid-March and have a recommendation or not a recommendation to the board by the second meeting in March.
Okay, and how did the road program go last year, two thousand twenty, from a budget point of view?
We were right on budget last year, as you may recall. I, we did not do the, the bond wearing course. Initially, we waited on that to see how the. Money was coming in as far as taxes and so forth, and we did that later in the year. So, but it was on, on, on course with the budget.
Okay, how many miles did we do last year? Do you recall?
Fred, you have any idea how many miles we did last year?
Okay. Not, not offhand, but I can find it out tomorrow and.
Yeah, could you, could you distribute that? I'd be interested in knowing how many we're doing. What are averages?
Sure. I think by including the, the ultra thin bond wearing course, we're getting to the point where we're. We're doing pretty well. I mean, we, obviously we have fifty miles of roads. We should be doing two miles a year. If we do the mill and the overlay for two miles a year, we would run out of money. So. Doing the ultra thin bond course, it really does lengthen the, the service area of the, of the roadways.
Yeah, the, the, my street was finally done and I, I think it's, it looks good. It's holding up well. Let's see how many years we get out of this.
Yeah, I, I know Kathy Morris is on here too. Her, her street was done as well, the same as Arbor Lane, so.
Yep, yep, I saw that. I went over there and took a look. Looks like a good job over there as well. Um. Are there any questions from the supervisors? Are there any questions from members of the public?
I'm not seeing anything, Mr. Chairman.
Can I have a motion to authorize advertising of the bids to the road program for two thousand twenty one?
No, moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Next up, acceptance of a proposal from the Man Associates for a traffic, traffic signal inventory study. Chad, is Chad still on the call?
Yes.
Chad, could you fill me in?
Sure, sure. This, this is a proposal for a compliance review for all the traffic signals. In Lower Township, this is something that we. To our municipal clients to do periodically for a couple of different reasons. One, to make sure that the traffic signals are operating in compliance with. The permit that's on file at the PennDOT office. To periodically. Evaluate the, the current conditions around the intersection to make sure that there's no safety issues that have arisen recently. And then we also review all the existing traffic signal equipment. At the intersection from the controllers to the pedestrian signals to the. To, to the overhead signals, the, the pre-pension devices. Traffic signal technology change pretty frequently. And so we, we do a, a review of all the equipment at the, at the intersections to make sure that it's in compliance with. With current PennDOT standards and the latest technologies so your intersections are operating as efficiently and as safely as possible. And then the other part of this is, is that once we have an inventory and we identify. Equipment upgrades that are needed at intersections. That then we've done our homework and puts us in a position. To pursue grant funding opportunities that are targeted at traffic signal upgrades. That's offered by PennDOT and other agencies. So we've been, we've been successful with that. Some of our other municipalities with packaging. And upgrades together several intersections in a package. And going after programs like PennDOT's Green Light Go program or their Arlie program and some others. The other two smaller components of the proposal is to update the township's traffic signal specifications. It outlines the specific equipment that's to be used. If PennDOT or developer comes into the town, installs a new traffic signal. Or is completing upgrades to existing signals. And then a component is to help Fred, the traffic signal maintenance provider in place. For him and his crew to use routine maintenance needs and any emergency repairs that, that tend to come up from time to time.
Okay, I got two questions for you. One is the battery backup. Now, we had an effort, I think it ended about four years ago, to make sure we had battery backups of all the signaling. In the township, at least the major signal. So we didn't have to use our generators when the power went out. Now, is that complete? Are, are we completely backed up at the major intersections with batteries?
We are all but one, I believe, down on Trewellin Avenue and Pendlin Place.
Do, do we have a schedule to get that one backed up?
We, we have been talking internally to go out for a grant to upgrade that signal.
Okay, my, my next question is, when you're done with the, the review. Is all of that information going to be entered into the GIS database?
Yes, that's what we're planning.
So we can bring this up. So we can bring this up online. Now, this is is this integrated with Tracer yet?
Yeah, we do have traffic signals is is one of our is one of our tracer, I'll call it, layers.
Okay.
System, yep.
And but I think that's just showing the location at this point. This this would actually be included with the specs would be on there.
That's what I'm asking.
And what we can do with Tracer also is it shows the locations, then we can also attach the most current permit plan. It's on file with PennDOT, so it's.
Okay, now, who's going to do that? Is that going to be you? Is that going to be our staff, Craig? Who who's going to actually enter that data? I want to make sure it gets captured.
What they could do is, well, McMahon would be able to import that all in on their side.
All right. It's a simple task of just importing the PDF files of the of the permit.
Okay. All right, that's I'm okay. So you need a vote on this, is that correct?
Yes.
Right, okay, because it does say acceptance. Are there any questions from the supervisors?
I have a question I can ask Chad after we make a vote because it doesn't pertain pertains to traffic, but not this inventory study.
Okay, we can hold that hold that thought, Ed. Are there any members of the public that have any questions on this proposal?
I had a question about the actual study.
Okay, please go ahead.
When was the last time that we conducted the study and how often do they need to happen in the future?
I believe it's been a few years since it was last conducted.
Say 2004.
A few years ago, there was a lot of traffic signal upgrades that were done in the township at that time, but it has been a few years now. Which is why we're recommending this current review. There's no set specific amount of time. It's just all a lot of it's just based on how how vigilant and how proactive you are in in upgrading and in maintaining things from from year to year.
Two thousand four was the last time, Daniel.
Is there any thought to put the township on some sort of a regular schedule for doing this? Or is it just when we sort of think of it?
Yeah, I I'm kind of questioning what prompted this to happen now.
I tell you the truth, I think it's with the new Public Works Director. Him coming on board so he could understand all the different traffic signals in the township. That's kind of what prompted this.
Okay, so going forward, I I think this is a good exercise. Going forward, I'd like to see this scheduled. I'd like staff to come back and tell us when it is that you think we should be doing this. Should it be every five years, every ten years, every two years? Having having the doing this when we have a new roads director, it's it's good, right? But that shouldn't be the criteria. Right? So we got to make sure we know what we have, we know what we need to have, because Chad, you're right, this the the technology is changing all the time. And the last I looked, we had it, we were wired in to centralize and Montgomery County centralized traffic control. Or I believe we are going to be. Is that still the case with the fiber optics?
Yep, we are.
Right? Are all our traffic signals part of the fiber optic network?
All except Trewell and Penland Pike.
Okay, well, there's goodness there.
Can it be part of the the maintenance bid document? Because I mean, you're referencing PennDOT's requirements, but you're not telling me specifically if PennDOT requires this on a certain interval. Could the recommendation as far as how often this needs to happen be included in that?
Yes. Okay, are there any more questions from the supervisors? Are there any more questions from the audience or any questions from the audience?
Not seeing anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Next, this is a big item. I'm sorry, Ed, go ahead. Ask Chad your question.
Yes, Chad, this is probably something you can't you you may know about or may not, but I we have a problem at the main intersection of Bethlehem Pike, Norristown Road and Sumney Town. And the fact that when people are going north on Bethlehem Pike, they pass through Penland Blue Bell Pike light and they approach the the main intersection. It's four points. And you you have a turn lane there for turning up north on.
Sumney Town?
Sumney Town. Thank you, Mark. And there's an arrow. And many times, people wait for that arrow as many cars as they could to try to get through, and they extend beyond the stopping point. They get caught between a red arrow, the the green arrow going to red. They're extended out into the intersection. The people coming down from Norristown Road making a left-hand turn there. They really cut away that that turn lane there. You you may not have a an answer for it, but it's a problem that I see on a regular basis at that intersection. Any comment?
Well, certainly, we're we're just beginning the phase two design for the intersection upgrades at the intersection. The part of that we'll look at. The positioning of the stop bars, the the lane markings. We'll also look at the clearance intervals for the traffic signal.
Okay.
To try and improve that as much as possible.
All right. All right. Thank you.
I have a question. Thanks for triggering my memory, Ed. So Chad, we we I'm I'm not sure who was in the conversation, but there was a thought to maybe close off that street between Bethlehem and Penland Pike, that that right turn as you're going toward Dager, I guess. So is there, can we request that there be some sort of study to look into that? If it's feasible, if it's something that would cause more traffic problems or if it would help the intersection area there?
Yeah, we were we were asked about that, I think, a few months ago. About the potential of doing that. We've just wrapped up the survey, the field survey and typographic survey phase two design. Shortly, we'll be getting into the preliminary engineering and design of the improvements in the intersection. We're going to take a look at that and and report to staff on what the impacts of that are in terms of the physical improvements, the cost, the grants that are associated with the project and and feasibility is of doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for Chad? All right, thank you. Next up is the acceptance of the R cap grant award for the North Penn Volunteer Fire Company for station improvements. What is not on this is exactly what the contributions are from Lower Guaney Township. Remember, this was a matching grant. So Lower Guaney Township has to come up with four hundred thousand dollars in this grant, matching fund component. And it's a one million dollar grant from the state. And I believe, and Frank Baxter's on here, you have to come up with another hundred thousand from somewhere else to make this work. So Frank, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just to to clarify, we did get a the redevelopment assistance capital improvement grant. We applied for it probably three and a half, four years ago. And representative at that time, Kate Harper, was a great asset. She helped us apply for it. It got a motion through the House and the Senate. And it really, we were waiting on our current governor to release it. And as of December twenty-third of this year, we were released. And it's a one million dollar matching grant, which means the state is going to put up one million dollars. We have to come up with a matching one million dollars. How we're going to make up that calculation is we had earlier conversations before we actually even applied for the grant with Lower Guaney Township. And as Mark Gray actually stated, we were looking to have Lower Guaney assist us with four hundred thousand dollars. We were late to this meeting because I was actually on the phone, and that actually equals to be forty percent. I was on the phone with North Wellsboro because we're looking to ask from North Wellsboro, ten to fifteen percent. The rest will be made up by our long-term savings and land value. So, you know, great news that we got the grant, but obviously we have to make sure that we have the the means to do the matching. If you would like, I can sort of highlight some of the project. I know, Craig, I did send over you some of the drawings.
Yes, I can find them if you want to continue to talk.
It's up to the supervisors.
Frank, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Brand.
Can this be spread out over a number of years or do you need you just need a commitment for four hundred thousand from Lower Guaney? And can we use a number of years out of our budget?
Short answer is yes. We're looking at, we have to float a one million dollar construction loan, so we're in the process of working with our bank, which is Key Bank, to get that. So if we the project starts within, say, three months period from now, we can actually start paying the vendors. We would look for assistance from Lower Guaney Township in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-two.
All right.
And and when you say the first quarter of twenty twenty-two, are you looking for the complete award of, say, four hundred thousand at that time?
We we would be, Mr. Brand. By that time, we'd be near the near the completion of the project and we would have to pay the pay the contractors, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you for answering the question.
Yes, sir.
Right. Real quick question. I want to make sure you got a generator up there. That's been on the to-do list. So is the project include a generator finally for the firehouse?
At the end of the day, one hundred percent, a generator will be installed. We are actually working a alternative means of funding, securing fundies for that. If that funding does not work through, it will come out of the grant. So bottom line, at the end of the day, when we're all finished, there will be a grant, excuse me, a generator onsite. I also on the phone, I have Bill Callen, who is going to be the chair of this project, and Chief Trainor is on the phone too, we're on this meeting.
All right, I have one more question, but this is directed towards Craig. Craig has lowered when a township and I I should remember this. Have we already committed the township as indications are that we have to North Penn in reference to when they filed this application with the state?
Yes, we this was committed not only this round, but two rounds ago. So it's been on the books for several years. Had a meeting or I didn't have a meeting, but I had a phone call with Frank and some people that North Penn have hired to assist them in this grant. And I said we would have the money available around February first of twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
That sound like a a good compromise between the township, North Penn and their their associates.
Yeah, I'm I'm sure we must have made some type of commitment for them to move forward to the application to the state. So you answered my question. Thank you.
I I believe three times we have made that commitment.
Yeah. All right.
I have a quick question.
Please go ahead.
I know that the the monies are available for ten years, so I'm assuming you're acting on them immediately. Is there any, I guess, what are the plans if it goes beyond what the what the budgeted amount would be?
On this project, it will not go with sent over because we have no extra money to spare. So we don't. We we don't have a bloody set extra, and so we have to be thinking about our longer age purchase of trucks and so forth. So we have no desire to go into our long-term savings that's dedicated just for the purchase of replacement of trucks in the future. So it it is looking at with use of land value, we will have funds available of one million five hundred thousand to actually put into this building and get a majority of the work done. Can I answer your question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions out there for the for the supervisors?
Mark, is Frank going to tell us a bit about the project?
I I can surely do that if you would like.
Go ahead, Frank.
So we're calling this phase three. Phase three, and and again, Matt Trainor is on the phone. He can actually chime in some things. Will allow us to have a state-of-the-art training facility on the third floor of the mill, and that's the 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 older building that you guys walked through when you we did the housing of our ladder truck. It also, one of the things we're going to do is put a lounge. Currently, because of a few alterations we made in the first few phases, there is no physical place for the firefighters that they're either on staff. Example, tonight, I am here at the firehouse between six o'clock and eleven o'clock at night covering calls. So there is no meaning for me to say if I wanted to make a little dinner here or hang out. We have just makeshift places to hang out, and we call that a lounge. And we are going to build a lounge to allow the the crews to have a place to cook the meals, as I said, also to study. You know, we're trying to promote people that are currently or members are currently working from home to be able to, if you want to work from home, come to the firehouse and work here. We're increasing the bandwidth. We're increasing facilities so you can actually use your computer more effectively. That's all part of the plan to entice people to hang out here to get a response. And Matt, you had some good statistics on response that you want to talk to?
Yes. So what we're trying to do with these renovations are create spaces for our members to be in station. In twenty twenty, our response time from dispatcher of a call to getting trucks on the road for fire dispatches was two minutes and seventeen seconds. That was cutting in half from the year previous in two thousand nineteen. And we want to put members in stations so that we can decrease that time even further, have them hanging out in a lounge, doing work in our radio room and computer stations, things like that. The sooner we get out the doors with fire trucks, the sooner we get to the fires. Fires will be smaller and easier to contain. With the training center on the third floor, in two thousand twenty, we had members, fifty-five members participate in trainings, whether that's at drill, at the fire academy, getting new certifications. But they spent over three thousand five hundred hours just getting training last year. So this is going to add more space for more capabilities, more trainings that we can bring into the station and get even more hours for our members. Frank, anything else to add?
No, we're also going to, and it's, you know, hypocritical for a fire company. At the end of the day, both the mill and the firehouse will be fully sprinkled. And that, to me, is is really important, being a emergency service. We're also going to build a emergency operations center, which we call a radio room, which will really help us coordinate if there's a large event within the township or any other, say, at the borough. And if you turn a page, which I had the rendering, the color rendering, Craig, right, that map right there, right by where there's two people walking is the. is the actual new official front entrance to the fire company, which makes ADA requirement. Anything else I missed, Bill, or Chief?
No, I think you got it.
Tassie, did I answer your question?
Yeah, that's great. I'm trying to align up the drawings here with the two buildings. So is the drawing just the one building, the older building, or is it a combination of both?
It's both. It's both.
Okay, I got it.
Right. So if you can, at the dead center where his mouse is, that's where a ladder is. And then going to the left, that is the mill.
Okay. I didn't realize it was a mill.
Well, it's historical, it's historical. It was a, that little bit of background, it was a livery where they actually house horses. And so it's interesting, when there was a fire, the fire department came, borrowed the horses, drove to the fire, and then returned the horses to make deliveries. So it's very cool that we're actually back in the mill that, you know, how many years ago? In the 1800s, we were actually borrowing horses.
That's very interesting. Well, good luck with your project. This is really great to get that money and I'm excited to see how it all turns out.
Yeah, congratulations, Frank, and to the whole unit. I mean, you've been pushing for this for years. You've done a tremendous job with your recruiting and your retention of volunteers. And this is just, you know, well-deserved and will help you to continue the strength of your recruiting and retention. So best of luck to you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Kathleen. And I would just say also thank you for the township. You have been a great supporter of the North Penn Volunteer Fire Company for many, many years. And we look forward to continuing in that great relationship.
Absolutely.
Okay. Craig, we don't need a vote for this, do we?
We need a vote just to accept for you to sign the acceptance of the grant.
Okay.
The letter, that's it at this point. We will have a future resolution for, to show the $400,000 that we had committed to. But that is not tonight. Tonight is just, the state needs to know that we are going to accept the grant that we received. It was due on the 23rd. And I asked for a, some leniency on that. So I have until, well, I have until Friday. But if you can come in and sign that letter tomorrow and I can send it over, that would be great.
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion, we accept the R A C P grant as awarded to North Penn Volunteer Fire Company.
The second.
Okay, just the second though. Is there any member of the audience here have any more questions?
I don't see anything, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is citizens' comments, concerns, questions for items that were not on the agenda. Is there anybody would like to ask any questions in the audience?
Not seeing anything, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, this is Brooks. I have one question if I could.
Sure.
I just thought of it, so I apologize for not bringing it. It has to do with the repaving proposals. I live on Surrey Drive, North Surrey Drive. Is there any consideration given to water management? The water on the street comes all the way down, I guess, from the berm up near the backside of the berm, up near 202, runs down the west side of the, all the properties, pedals at the intersection of Latch String and Surrey, goes on down, goes across the cul-de-sac at the lower end, down the Rosenthal's property, and down into a creek. When the, when the water lines were installed a few years ago, I asked the contractor if there's any thought given to putting some storm drains in to divert any water, possibly back to the creek that's behind the east side of Surrey. But at that time, there was, there was nothing in it. But the west side of Surrey Drive seems to get all the water. The east side is bone dry. And so I was just curious if the paving truck hasn't left the barn yet, any consideration being given to look at the slopes of the road surface or some storm drains to reduce the amount of water that comes down off the hill? That's it. Thank you.
Well, we can certainly take a look. And Craig, could you get with the staff to go out there and our engineer and find out if there's anything that we could do? Take a look at it first off. And, you know, the storm drains are very expensive to put in. They're a major effort, but we can look at it. It's a good question.
If you come out, let me know. I can try to be with you.
Okay, Craig, could you?
I have some pictures. I have some pictures.
Tessie, didn't you bring something like this up before?
Yeah, actually, Brooks, what I mentioned before was the, the water that pools there at the culvert that goes under Latch String. I didn't even, I was aware, certainly I've been aware of the flooding almost that comes down the street in front of your house when it rains. So that also is a pain point that needs to be looked at and see if there's some engineering that could help that.
We did look at, I'm sorry.
Some of the residents have some stones on that side to help mitigate the erosion. But that's all it's doing is just keeping it from creating a ditch on that side. Just something to put into the mix if the opportunity presents itself, or maybe for future planning.
Yeah, there is those storm system out there. We did look at the culvert out there. It looks like we could do some kind of paving culvert or to try to direct the water into the creek a little bit faster, we'll say. And we're looking to do that when the weather breaks. But there is no plans for a, putting storm sewers in there. But we can definitely go with, talk to the engineer and make sure the crown of the road is at least sufficient.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So, Brooks, if you have the pictures and you would like to email them to me, you could just, if you want to email to contactus@lowergwinnett.org and I will get them. Or if you want to find my name on the website.
Find them on my phone.
Okay, great.
So maybe this is part of our long-range strategic plan. But do we ever try to address drainage problems like that? Because since I've lived in Lower Gwinnett, my neighborhood does have a lot of, not flooding, but the water really runs down the streets. And, you know, I guess the neighborhood was put in when seepage fields and so forth were needed. And maybe not much thought was given to storm systems. But does the township have a, any sort of a strategic plan to address drainage issues?
At this point, I do not know of any.
Yeah, Tessie, that's a, that's a huge question. That's an enormously expensive question. There are flood maps. Our engineer does get involved and make sure we're in compliance with all of our construction. Because the problem is not the construction that goes to the new construction because you're not allowed to move water off of your facility. Like, for example, the shopping center across the street, they were required not to add additional flow to the stream. Can't do it. So it has to be retention of the water on the site. So the problem is with the older homes. When I say the older homes, when they were put in, the older developments, there was no requirement that water not, that you don't, that you don't provide, send your water to your neighbor. Right? So, so those houses, when they were built, they were in compliance. But today, they wouldn't be if they were built. So the question becomes, where's all this water gonna go? And the answer is, as we get more rain, and we are getting more rain, it goes in the creeks, it floods. So are there storm control measures we put in? There certainly are. We're looking at the dam over by the high school to see what, if there's things that we can do with that, even though it's not our dam, our neighbors get flooded. So there are things we can do. It is part of the TMDL effort to try to reduce flash flooding, right? Because it erodes the stream back and it's all kinds of problems it creates. So from that point of view, there's a, there's a program. But we don't have a program, at least that I'm aware of, to go back and look at every development to determine what it was that their storm water conditions, how we could improve their storm water conditions. Because we can't make them do anything. They're in their property. We can't go back to them and say, you have to put in dry wells, you have to put in swales, you have to, there isn't anything out there. So are there references afoot to try to help where we can? Yes. How much effort can we put into it? There's, if there's not a detention basin, there's no place for the storm water drain to go into. And if we just put it into the stream, what happens is the stream then gets flooded and the people downstream of that development will then be impacted. So it's a very complicated.
Yeah, I appreciate that. But we did just have all the water mains replaced in the neighborhood not long ago. And, you know, when that work was going on, I think if there had been some sort of strategic plan to address this issue, it could have been incorporated in that process. I would just like the township to think about, what can we do? Maybe not every neighborhood is equally affected. Maybe some neighborhoods have no problem whatsoever. But it is, it has been an issue since I've lived in my house. So it bears thinking about, planning. You know, that's why you have a strategic plan.
Well, the effort for storm water runoff is part of the TMDL plan.
Yeah.
That's what's being worked. But as far as, we're just trying to work on the detention basins. Remember, the township does not own many of those detention basins. They're privately owned. And so even if they need repair to remediate downstream flooding, we can't do it. We don't own the property. So, and we can't force somebody retroactively to make repairs on their own detention base. So.
Mark, if I may, I think the request was made and answered by the staff that they will take a look at this particular request that was made this evening. And if we could move on since we're past three hours of this meeting.
Okay, I get it. I understand. So we can have a conversation offline, Tessie. We can go into more detail, but it's a, it's a big problem. It's a big challenge. Are there any more questions from the audience?
There is. Mark Schaefer has his hand raised.
Go ahead, Mark.
I don't want to extend the meeting any longer either. But just, if I could just get a general idea of what's happening with that intersection at Summey Town, Bethlehem and Norristown, it's clear that the bridge has been extended over Willow Run on either side. So obviously, something's beyond the planning stage. So if somebody just get, you know, we expect in this year, this will happen, the next year, that'll happen. And just an idea, because I heard different things. I thought it'd be more planned out. And I heard you're in phase two of planning, what might happen, yet I see construction. Just wonder what the thought was.
Chad, could you give us a 50,000-foot nosebleed overview?
Improvements to the intersection were broken into two phases. The first phase is what you see going on right now, which is the extension of the culvert on the Summey Town Pike approach to the intersection. The extension of that culvert will allow us to commit in phase two and widen that portion of Summey Town Pike to provide some additional lanes at the intersection to improve operations. Phase two is being funded by grants, which were recently approved by PennDOT, which allowed us to get the field and topographic survey work started just before the holidays. And we're wrapping that up now. Minimum, the design process for the phase two improvements, probably looking at a 12 to 14-month design and review process with PennDOT. Minimum, it doesn't take into account any issues that could come up later with right-of-way or utilities. But as we progress through the design, we'll certainly keep the township up to date on how the schedule is going on the project. And as we get further through the design, what the targeted date is to get the project out to bid and start construction.
And Mark, we also had another project tangential to the improvements of that intersection. I guess it was completed last year. Improvements to the traffic lights, the five traffic lights at Summey Town, McKean and Norristown, Bethlehem and Penland, and I believe out towards Dagger and Bethlehem. Craig, you'll correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
So they kind of talk to one another now to help with the flow. They can detect the volume and the flow, which hopefully with, coupled with these intersection improvements that we're doing, will really ameliorate a lot of the congestion and backup there.
Okay, Mark, is that sufficient?
Thank you very much. So it's a couple of years before we figure out what we're going to do for a couple of years thereafter.
We're working on it.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Managers report. Craig?
I don't have anything at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Brand would kill me.
Yeah. Any comments from the supervisors? Mr. Brand?
I'd like to congratulate you and the staff. I thought tonight we covered a number of important issues. Of course, the public may or may not know, we had an executive session for the supervisors earlier. And I think a lot was discovered, covered tonight that had to be covered. And it was a very good meeting.
Thank you. Kathleen?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Tessie?
I think I'm good. Thank you.
Danielle?
Want to wish everyone a good night.
To Danielle.
Yeah, there was a lot going on here. I'd just like to make one comment here. It was sadness to tell you that Phil Albright, he's a philanthropist in our community. He was on the library board, he's a member of the Rotary, or he was. He, he's a graduate of Temple. He had all these activities in our communities. Just a great guy. He's passed away. So I think there's a article in the Ambler Gazette written by Reverend Kwan talking about it. But I just found out right before this meeting. So it's, it's a sad day to lose somebody like.
Yeah, some local legend.
Yes, he is. So, all right, thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Night, everybody.
Night.